Good evening. My name is Dan Kipley, and I just wanted to inform the Planning Commission that I'm seeking a seat on the Minnehaw County Commission. The primary is June 4th, and I just wanted you to make you aware that I'm looking forward to serving in Minnehaw County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commissioner's staff, requests the item being removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the April 22nd, 2024 meeting are included in the consent agenda. Next, I'll read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the Planning Commission or the audience. If any member of the Planning Commission or the audience would like to be heard on the item, please raise your hand, and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any items or meaning on the consent agenda will be approved by the Planning Commission with the conditions recommended by staff. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of the April 22nd, 2024 meeting. Item number two is conditional use permit 24-20 to make one building eligibility available in the southwest quarter, the northwest quarter, within the northwest quarter, and there's an exception of the east 660 feet, the west 1,751.25 feet, the north 660 feet, and except tract one HHW Farms addition and exception H-2. That's the end of the exception. Section 32 Township 101 North, range 52 West. That is in Wellington Township. The petitioner and property owner is David Hoverstein. Location is approximately 10 miles south of Humboldt on South Dakota Highway 19. Is there anyone that would like to address this item, either from the plant, from the cit-- okay. We will remove that. Item two, the regular agenda.
Madam Chair, would you mind clarifying? Is he the, was that the petitioner?
Oh.
Okay, we, we, okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, that item will be removed and be on the regular agenda. We'll try and, item number three, conditional use permit 24-21 to exceed 3,612 feet of accessory building space, requesting 10,872 square feet on the property legally described as Jensen's Tract Northwest Quarter, Southwest Quarter, Section 8 Township 101 North, Range 47 West. That is in Valley Springs Township. The petitioner and property owner is Richard Reichow. He's also the property owner located 26362, 485th Avenue. Is there anyone from the audience or the commission wants to address this item?
I'm a neighbor.
Okay. We'll move, remove item number three as well. Item number four, conditional use permit 24-22 to transfer one building eligibility from the southwest quarter, the northeast quarter, to the northwest quarter, the northeast quarter, all within the northeast quarter. There is an exception of four RDS on the west side and H-1 for road, for road 1.51A and except tract one and two Berkman's addition, end of exception. Section 11 Township 101 North, range 48 West. That is in Split Rock Township. The petitioner is Kara Bush. The property owner is Beau Kellenberger, approximately one mile southeast of Brandon. Anyone from the audience or commission wish to be heard on this item? Item number five is conditional use permit 24-23 to exceed 3,600 square feet of accessory building space, requesting 3,872 square feet on the property legally described as a northwest quarter, the northeast quarter, the northeast quarter, and a south half, a vacant section line right away, lying adjacent, and there is an exception of Derrick's Tract One, end of exception. Section 28 Township 102 North, range 48 West. That is in Brandon Township. The petitioner is Tanya Muller. Property owner is Jason Ellsworth, located 48085260th Street. Anyone from the audience or the Planning Commission wish to be heard on this item? You aren't the petitioner, are you?
Petitioner and property owner.
Okay, okay. So we'll remove that one to the general, to the regular agenda then.
Well, Madam Chair, if, do you have, do you have an objection to the issue?
Clarification.
Okay, then let's, let's pull it.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll remove it to the regular agenda. Okay. Item number six, conditional use permit 24-24 to exceed 3,600 square feet of accessory building space, requesting 3,888 square feet on the property legally described as lot five. Per Review Estates, there is an exception of the east 50 feet, end of exception. West half, northwest quarter, Section 36 Township 101 North, range 51 West. That is in Wall Lake Township. Petitioner is Clint Stensel. Property owner is Sam Everson, located 26724465th Avenue. Anyone from the audience or the Planning Commission wish to be heard on this item? Okay, item number seven, conditional use permit 24-25 to allow temporary fireworks sales on the property legally described as lot two, block one, renter quarter addition, southeast quarter, southeast quarter, Section 9 Township 102 North, range 49 West, in Mapleton Township. Petitioner is Jeffrey Bray. Petitioner or property owner is Sorum Holdings, II LLC, located 25792 Lindbergh Lane. Anyone from the audience or the Planning Commission wish to be heard on this item? Okay, I have item number two, item number three, and item number five that will be removed to the regular agenda. So we will be voting on item number one, item number two, let's see here. Item number four, sorry. Item number six and item number seven.
I'll move approval of those remaining consent agenda items.
I'll second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Good evening, Commissioners Mason Stephan from the County Planning Office. So I'll quickly go over item number two here. So as the Chair explained, this is for, to make one building eligibility available on this subject property. Currently, the subject property has two conditional use building allegabilities that are assigned to the center of this lot, and that is due to the fact that this is a lot of record. And so all building allegabilities assigned to lots of record require conditional use permits. So the petitioner is requesting to make one of the building allegabilities available that is just assigned generally here to make it available and transfer it down to this quarter section in order to plat and sell, survey and sell a acreage here for somebody to buy. I did visit the site on May 2nd, visited the site and the surrounding area. The building eligibility will be moving to the quarter-quarter section along the state highway, which will provide better access to the site, and there are very few residential acreages in the area, so there should be minimal impact to the surrounding area. With every conditional use permit, there are six criteria that we look at, and I'll just generally go through those. So number one is the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the uses already permitted and upon property values. The petitioner, or the petitioner or any person who builds the house on the, a house on the property will be required to sign a right-to-farm notice covenant, which will notify the owner of the realities of being located in the agricultural area. Additionally, the moving of this building eligibility along the state highway should not have any general negative effects on the area, and there are no CAFOs or concentrated animal feeding operations within a mile of the proposed location of the building eligibility. Number two, that the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding vacant property for uses predominant in the area. So this property is in the very southwest corner of the county and is very agricultural dominant, and so there will be very few developments in this area for the foreseeable future, and this one building eligibility will not affect the vacant land in the area. Number three, that utilities, access roads, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities are provided. There is an existing field approach onto the state highway right here, which will provide access onto the proposed platted lot, and the petitioner will still need to obtain any applicable permits for the state, from the state, for the improvement of that access if those are necessary. The petitioner will also be required to obtain access to all the other necessary utilities such as water, and they'll have to install a septic system, but those are typical for all residences in the county. Number four, that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. There is a requirement of two off-street parking spaces for every single-family dwelling, and this will be met when the house is built on-site. Number five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting inclusive of lighted signs so that none of these constitute a nuisance. Typically, single-family dwellings do not constitute any nuisances to this degree, but the property will have to comply with the 2004 Public Nuisance Ordinance from Minnehaw County once the single-family dwelling is constructed on the site. Number six, that the health, safety, general welfare of the public and the comprehensive plan. The building eligibility transfer should not have any anticipated effects on the health and safety of the general public, and this will, this building eligibility transfer does not increase the number of building allegabilities within this section of land and will allow for the preservation of more farmland by moving the building eligibility along the road and allowing the middle of this quarter-quarter to remain as farmland. So staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit 2420 with two conditions. They are, number one, that a right-to-farm notice covenant shall be placed on the deed prior to the issuance of a building permit for a single-family dwelling, and number two, that the applicant, that the applicable permits shall be obtained from the SD Department of Transportation for any improvements to the existing access before a building permit is to be issued. And then I'll just quickly go through some site pictures here. So this is looking to the south from that field approach on the highway. This is looking a little bit more southeast into the south part of the lot. This is looking directly east from that access, so this will probably be generally where the house will be built, assuming if the access will stay the same. And then this is kind of looking to the north, and then this kind of shows the nearest neighbor looking directly north. You can see that mobile home that was approved a few years ago is built there. And then this is kind of looking across the street to the west, showing that nearest farmstead over there. So with that, I'll go back to the location map, and I'm available for any questions if you have them.
Any questions for him? Is the petitioner here? Will you please step forward and state your name and address?
My name is David Hoverstein, 2800 West Nicole Drive, Sioux Falls.
Any of you have any questions for him? I guess not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to address this item? Please step forward and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Chris Caston. I live at 45, or 26711455th Avenue, Humboldt. I am the farmstead directly across the road. Listening to the comments here, I don't think I have a problem with the housing eligibility's moving. My biggest problem is the location. While there is not a confinement within a mile, there is a confinement within a mile and a quarter, and it's a hog facility, and I live on top of the hill. And for third of the year, doesn't matter if it's spring, summer, fall, winter, the smell of pig shit is, comes down that valley, and I don't think that that is a location that a person will want to move into that will be part of the neighborhood, that'd be long-term. The neighbors that we have there right now, while they're great people, they do not have the abilities to properly take care of the land, and we have a lot of, the entire lot is noxious weeds that used to be, that are blowing into all the directions of the neighbors that are around, that we're having to take care of. Yeah. I just want to make, make it clear that, you know, our neighborhood and the neighbors I've talked to around are not in favor of this building eligibility putting down by the highway because of the, the smell, because of the nuisance of other neighbors. We just want to keep tensions between the agricultural people that farm the land and people that are moving out of town that want a piece of prime country real estate, pristine country real estate. I don't think they realize that, what it all entails. So, thank you for your time. There's any questions?
Any questions for him? Doug?
I think that's why we have the right to farm. They have to sign that.
Yep.
So there were what they're getting into.
They, they are, but they just sign it. It was from what I found with our neighbors that we've had. I've had people complaining that we're farming at 10 o'clock at night, and I'm just, I don't want to have a enclave of housing out here in the country. It doesn't belong that far from town. I mean, there's, there's other places that housing could be.
I get what you're saying.
Yes.
I get what you're saying, for sure. But they sign it?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, I mean, you know, they signed it, so it's their problem.
Yep, I understand that. I just want to make, make it aware that I, I do not stand in favor of this, so. I'm, I'm sure it'll pass through, but I just want to let it be known. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address this item?
I would just like to state that the gentleman who's buying it is a bridge construction fellow. He's from Pier. He's a country fellow to begin with, and his goal is to build a house and to have a machine storage area for his construction equipment that he builds bridges. I really think he is well-aware of farm smells and cows and working late at night, and having owned that ground for almost 10 years, I don't live there, but I, I really don't smell a hog barn in that valley. It may happen occasionally, but it must be quite rare.
Thank you. Do you want to address this item? Please state your name and address.
I'm Chris Caston, 45472268 Street. And I don't think anybody, I've lived here at that place where my son's at for 44 years. We've had one bridge washed out, one 10-foot culvert washed out, and there's a second culvert there. I don't think a lot of these people know how much water goes blasting through there. Now, that's happened two times, and other times it's survived, but I don't think, these poor kids that are there right now, I think that's not going to be cool someday, and they have no place to put a shelter belt for, to the north or the south. This is not a cool place to do anything here. It's dangerous. Thank you.
Anybody else care to address this item?
The, the area where any buildings would be placed would be at least 35 to 40 feet above the level of the creek, and I don't know really how the floodplain would travel, but I should think it would be well above anything but a 500-year flood.
Okay, if anybody else doesn't want to speak, I'm going to close the floor. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I appreciate the, the feedback from some of our neighbors to the west, but I think Doug, I think, hit the point on the, the right to farm, and I think it's not our job to necessarily micromanage people's preferences and where, where they want to live. This is a valid use of a building eligibility, and so I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and second to approve conditional use permit 24-20. Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item number three. Mason?
Good evening, Commissioners Mason Stephan from the County Planning Office again. So just as a refresher, since it's been a little bit, so this is item number three, conditional use permit 2421 to exceed 3,600 square feet of accessory building space, requesting 10,872 square feet on the listed property up there. So I'll pull up the location map. So the petitioner is requesting that 10,872 square feet of residential accessory building area. Currently, there are four older farm buildings on the site, which I suppose I'll pull up the site plan here so you can see those. That totals 7,372 square feet, and these buildings were all built prior to the current zoning ordinance, or we don't have any building permit records for them, so that is assuming that they were built before 1980. The petitioner has also removed several other farm buildings. As you can see on this site plan, there's a couple X's on here, and then this request would allow them to build a new 50-by-70 building, right, this orange rectangle here, for personal storage on their property. Since the new building will be built in a new location on the property and will increase the total square footage, a conditional use permit is required for this request. Again, I did visit the site on May 2nd and did a site visit of the site and the surrounding area. The area is mostly agricultural land, but there are three residential acreages directly to the south. There is also a existing farmstead to the west that has livestock and has several buildings on it that are used for their livestock. Therefore, this proposed larger building generally fits within the existing uses in the area. Again, with every conditional use permit, there are six general criteria, and I'll just go through those. So again, the effect, the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the uses already permitted. In general, accessory buildings don't have negative effects upon the use and enjoyment of other residential properties in the area, and it shouldn't have an overall negative impact on the property values to the neighboring properties. Number two, that the effect upon the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding vacant property. The proposed site is in an area that is mostly used for agriculture, and the majority of the neighboring property is farmland with only a few residential acreages. Therefore, the vacant land, if it is developed, will be developed with building allegabilities and have uses similar to this site with a house and accessory buildings, so this request should not affect any development on vacant farmland into the future. Number three, that utilities, access roads, drainage, and/or other necessary facilities are provided. As you can see here, the, the new accessory building will be accessed via the existing driveway, so this is the driveway. It's kind of hard to see in this, maybe I'll pull up the other one, but, so this is the existing driveway into the acreage, and so the building will be located up here, so it'll use the existing driveway. And the addition of a new accessory building should not have an overall negative impact on the drainage to the surrounding area. Number four, that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. The proposed site of the accessory building is large enough to accommodate any off-street parking requirements, and the building will also provide additional off-street storage and parking to the site. That measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting inclusive of lighted signs so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. So no commercial business or storage will be allowed in this proposed accessory building at any time. It can only be used for the petitioner's personal property, but any public nuisance violations will be addressed upon the planning department receiving a complaint if that does become the case in the future. And also, all outdoor lighting will be required to be directed down onto the site in order to prevent light pollution being an issue to the surrounding property owners. Number six, that the health, safety, general welfare of the public and the comprehensive plan. Again, this personal use of the accessory building shouldn't have an impact on the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, and the proposed use will generally fit within the uses of other properties in the rural area and conforms to the goals of the 2035 Invasion Comprehensive Plan. So with that, staff does recommend approval of conditional use permit 2421 with seven conditions, and I suppose I'll just read those again here. So number one, that the building location shall adhere to the submitted site plan. Number two, that the total area of all accessory buildings may not exceed 10,872 square feet. Number three, that the building shall be an accessory used to continue use of the property as a residential lot. Number four, that the building shall not be used for commercial uses or as a dwelling at any time. Number five, that all outdoor lighting shall be of a full cutoff and fully shielded design to prevent direct spillage of light beyond the property boundaries. Number six, that a building permit shall be required prior to the construction of the accessory building. And number seven, that the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the accessory building at any time after proper notice to the owner to ensure that the property is in full compliance with the conditional use permit conditions of approval and the Minnehaw County zoning ordinance. So just generally go through some site pictures here. You can see on the site plan that'll be right here on the left side of the driveway. So here, I'm standing on the driveway, and you can see that the pad has already kind of, all the, a lot of the dirt work has already been done for the building. Like, you can see that'll be, or to the west of the house there, that's the house on the property, and then this is looking to the south of the driveway with those existing buildings there that are referenced in the staff report. And this is kind of looking at the closest point of the building to the nearest neighbor across the street. You can see their house there. And then this is back on the street looking to the south. This road kind of curves down along the creek, and then, yeah, I guess I'll go back to the site plan, and if you have any questions, I am available.
Any questions for him? Is the petitioner here?
I'm here.
Will you please step forward and state your name and address, sir?
Yes, Rick Reichow, and I live at Valley Springs, 26362, 485th Street in Valley Springs.
Anyone have any questions for him? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there someone from the audience that wishes to address this item? Anyone else care to address this item? I guess I'll close the floor then. Commissioners?
Well, Madam Chair, I think we've got one resolved. I'll move, I'll move for approval.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and second to, okay, to, for the conditional use permit 24-21. Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. By the way, if your item has been approved, you're free to go. We'll move on to item number five. Kevin?
I'll just kind of reiterate that this is conditional use permit number 2423 to exceed 3,600 square feet of accessory building space on the property at 48085260th Street. And this would be the location. Here is the site plan. It'd be kind of located down in what's now like a horse pasture, and I guess since it is the petitioner that is requesting this for clarity, perhaps we can have the petitioner up front to figure out what the question is before I go through the whole staff report, if that's all right.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Tanya Muller. I live at 48085260th Street, Brandon. There's just a part that I just noticed that I want clarification on. It says that the existing horse barn is planned for demolition, and that is not correct. When I applied for this, I had him help me apply for it, and he measured out the horse barn and our exterior garage and figured out the square footage, and then I told him the size of shed I want to build, and I never said I was tearing the barn down. We have a horse in the pasture, and it needs it stable. So I just, I don't want to be, you guys to pass it, and then I'd be forced to tear the horse barn down. It's in the staff analysis, there's a sentence, and I never, ever said that we were tearing it down.
Kevin, you want to address that, please?
So Mason's working through. So the horse barn-- So the horse barn is 3,200 square feet. The existing single-stall garage is, do we know how big that is? Did I state that in the minutes?
It's smaller than the other one. I don't remember.
So if that existing garage is 600 square feet, which is a typical like two-stall garage, or is it a single-stall garage?
It's 40 by 80 shed.
No, the little existing building.
It's a single garage.
Okay, so maybe the calculations do include that, because a single-stall garage is probably 300 or 400 square feet plus the horse barn. We can make that correction in the staff report and note that the the 4,112 square feet, it would include all existing buildings.
I just don't want to be forced to tear it down.
That would probably be the easiest way, is just to note that includes, in the maximum size, include that includes all existing buildings plus the one. So that would be it.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, are we asking for an amendment to Condition Two? Kevin, to encapsulate the total square feet?
Yes. Yes, so if you just wanted to add, total accessory building includes all the single garage, horse barn, and proposed 40 by 80 building, or something like that, to make sure we include all buildings. Because if the, I do think that she might be right, based on those numbers, that that horse barn is probably included in this number. It just, I understood it to be planned for removal.
Okay. Madam Chair, I think I've got an amendment then.
Okay, go ahead.
So then I guess I would make a motion to amend our conditions, so that number two would read that the total area of all accessory buildings may not exceed 4,112 square feet, which is inclusive of all existing buildings and the proposed new building. So I'd make a motion for that amendment.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And then I'd, do we, can I make a motion to approve the Conditional Use Permit as amended?
I'll second that as well.
Okay, I have a motion and second on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now Kevin, that's clear now about that, item number five, correct? Okay. So we'll move on to the regular agenda. That's the rezoning of District C Commercial District to the property legally described as Lot 2, Haddel addition, in the Town of Lyons Township 101 North, Range 50 West, Lyons Township. Apetition is Mike Canton. Property owner is Dennis Haddel, 327 First Street.
Good evening, I'm Kevin Hookman from the County Planning Department. This parcel is where the former Lyons School Building and Bus Garage are currently located in the Town of Lyons. The property owner recently underwent a process of vacating an alleyway in the original town block and replatted it into two smaller lots. You can see it here on the map. Each lot does contain over an acre, and both lots are currently zoned R1 residential. The applicant is requesting to rezone Lot 2, which is the red lot here, into C Commercial. The applicant submitted a narrative description and general site plans for the proposal. I would note that going back, staff has been working with this property owner for some time. In fall of 2018, the property owner applied to rezone the property. At that time, it was denied, providing that there was public nuisance items on the property, and the petitioner didn't make much of an effort to clean up the property. Since that time, staff has continued to work with the property owner. And although things have slowly improved over the years, there are still items on the property that would be considered a public nuisance. The property owner's son explained his plans for the property. Ultimately, the plans would be utilize the old school building and bus garage for specialty car repair and sales, and then to construct a residence on the remaining lot that is not being rezoned. The property owner should be aware that the public nuisance ordinance still applies to the commercial zoning district, so after this is approved, we are still expecting improvements on the property. And also, that he should be aware that the Conditional Use Permit is required for vehicle repair, service, and car sales in the commercial zone property even after this rezoning process is done, if it's approved. If, at that time, we can add conditions on to the process, such as screening, maintenance for the road, that sort of thing. The property is located on the northern edge of the Town of Lyons. This would be First Street on the north side. Farmstead is located to the north, and there are residential properties to the south. Commercial zone, storage, and contractor lot is located to the east, which would be right here, the old gymnasium there. This property was rezoned in 1998. The Town of Lyons is a rural service area within the 2035 comprehensive plan. The driveway located out here would access onto First Street, and which is, excuse me, and that would go to the west and has direct access onto the highway with only passing by the residential driveways of the farm residence to the north. The applicant and the property owner should also be aware that a building permit is required for most working structures prior to work starting. So if he's going to be altering any of the structures there, he will need to get a building permit and possibly engineering, depending on what work he's doing. Building on commercial lot will need to meet commercial building standards. Staff does find that this proposed rezoning conforms to the goals and policies envisioned 2035 comprehensive plan and recommends approval. I would note that after working on the staff report, it was brought up to me that the Lyons Township does not maintain this portion of First Street here. It is a right-of-way, but that is something that to be brought up to the petitioner as well, that he will be required to do his own maintenance on the road, clear the snow, to make sure there's gravel on it if need be. He could work with the township to bring the road up to a township standard, and perhaps the township would be able to make a decision whether or not to accept that road at that time, but he would have to work with the township on that. I'll go over a few photos of the property. So you can see here from across the way, this would be the residential lot in front, and then the school, and the proposed commercial lot in the back. This is looking from the south of the property. The school is pretty close to the front property line there. And then this would be looking from the driveway towards the bus garage. You can see some items there, and also like some vehicles. And then this would be looking kind of the other direction from that driveway. You can see some of the vehicles and other building materials and stuff on the property. Here's an old maintainer, or excuse me, an old lift, forklift, that's been on the property for a long time. And then this is the condition of the road looking to the west from the driveway. You can see it's very narrow. It's been largely grown in, lots of trees on the one side, so to get, say, trucks or vans in there, it'd probably be best to remove some of those trees. And then this would be looking from like the stairs at the front of the school to the nearest residence to the west there. I think that's it. Bring it back to the overhead view. And again, I'll reiterate, the staff's recommending approval. Am I here for any questions?
Any questions for him? Is the petitioner here? Please step forward, state your name and address, sir.
Mike Canton, 4104 South Enfield Avenue, Sioux Falls.
Commissioners, any questions for him?
Madam Chair, can you just help us understand your plans for the commercial property?
I am representing the buyer and seller in the transaction here. Rezoning this is a condition of them following through with the sale. Kevin's pretty accurate, aside from repair shop. He sells about five to 10 cars a year, so by state law, he's required to carry a dealer's license. So that would be the reason. I will say that the property's been classified as commercial, and they've been paying commercial taxes since they've owned the property. It's most definitely looking at it not a residential property with, I think it was 11,000 square foot school, about a 7, 8,000 square foot parking lot with the bus barn. So.
And I know there's, Madam Chair, there's a distinction between how it's classified for equalization and tax and purpose versus what we're having jurisdiction over tonight with the zoning. And I guess some of what I'm getting at is trying to have some assurances that we'll have the place cleaned up if we have some history of potential nuisance issues. Can you speak to some of that?
The, I guess, the past, I guess I would say is the past when it's changing owner's hands. The buyer right now has worked last year to clean it up some. I mean, if he's not going to be allowed to use the property, I don't know why he would continue sticking money into it. Issues in the past. They replaced all the windows in the school. They had constant vandalism. Windows get broke out every week. So he made the mistake of letting one of his friends occupy it, hoping that it would curb some of the property vandalism. That is when the property went downhill fast. It was disgusting, I guess I would say.
Okay. Thank you for that background. That's all I had, Madam Chair.
Anyone else care to ask him any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair. I know you talked to me about trees out there and stuff. Is he aware of that, too?
Aware of all the conditions. He knows he can't bring his car lot out there until he meets the Conditional Use Permit. He knows he has to come forward to apply for that.
Has he talked anything about getting rid of what's left up there at all or not? What's the equipment that's there, I guess, or anything?
You're not talking about somebody with a lot of money. I mean, he's been paying a thousand bucks a month in rent for a property so he could maintain his dealer's license. Once he's able to move out here, it'll get cleaned up. I don't blame him. I mean, he's taking a nuisance property, and without being able to use it, I wouldn't be able to justify putting money into it quite yet. So, yes, he will be taking care of it.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience care to address this item? Okay, please step forward, state your name and address, sir.
Again, my name is Don Johnson. We purchased the old gymnasium, I don't know how many eons ago. Bought it from Gerald Johnson Plastering, and they used it to fabricate walls and such with the EPHAS system. Like I said, I don't recall when we bought the building, but it's worked real well for us. I don't know Mr. Canton from Abilhay, but I don't want to make any grief, but it's kind of sad that it's been vandalized, and it's not a new building. My mom was the librarian up there, a zillion years ago. And I think that the building was kind of a grand structure, and it just fell to disuse. And like I say, I don't want to make any waves. I don't really have a complaint about Mr. Canton. I mean, there hasn't been any issues. But I just, I was just kind of concerned, kind of rather concerned. I am passing my business on to my 40-year-old daughter, tree generation four in this whole Scandinavian builder idea. And we utilize the building. And we don't really rent storage, and a lot of it is vacant. There's some of our material that's stored up there, gypsum cement, pallets of gypsum cement. And I don't want to make any grief, but just kind of curious. That's, you know, that's about all I got to say about it. I would like to meet Mr. Canton someday. We bought the building, like I say, I don't know how many years ago. We got it from Gerald Johnson Plastering. K O, thank you for allowing me to speak. Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else care to address this item? Please step forward and state your name and address.
Don Lee Fredrickson, 325th Street, Lyons, South Dakota. Do you have, will this work? Kevin, will I come on, does he can show pictures? Show pictures. Me and Kevin had most of the pictures. I'm going to try and just find one and show you what I was thinking. There now, we're shutting everything off. Most mine refers to the February 25, 2019 county meeting, commission meeting concerning this property. And it's, once they've got their renter out of there, which I believe was Caleb Huddle, he cleaned his stuff and moved out, but everything else stayed. All the cars, the machinery, and everything else. You can tell by this camper with the tree growing up too there, it's been there for a while. And that's our concern in Lyons, is things come along that things aren't going to get cleaned up, and it's going to be a bigger junkyard than it is right now. And it's back to the fact that we've had so many people, not so many, but two or three people move into Lyons, buy a piece of property, tell us how they're going to build a house and move in town and improve it, and all they do is use it for a dumping ground for their stuff, and they live someplace else. And that's our concerns. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to address this item? Please state your name and address.
Deb Bundy, 302 First Street, Lyons. We are the farmstead right across the road. Kevin, you mentioned that they had vacated an alley. I'm not sure where that, I'm just curious.
So, prior to plating the property, there was an alleyway that was from here all the way across through the school building to here. It was an unused alleyway that was platted. It would have been similar to this alleyway right here.
Okay. It may have been platted in there, but that was always the playground in the school. I mean, that was never used. Just curious. So, two thousand nineteen was a similar request. Little has changed, maybe a pathway has been made through there. So, you know, I guess I would venture to wonder why, if it was denied five years ago and no real improvements have been made, why it would be approved now. The landowner had many requests to clean up, and I think it had to be coerced quite a bit to get it done. You know, looking at the comprehensive plan, the encouragement is for businesses to be at the interstate interchange. It talks about encouraging if we go into the rural service areas, management of growth should promote cohesive and attractive development. Obviously, that has not been adhered to here. It hasn't, you know, it really hasn't bothered us a whole lot across the way, but as they have said, that road is not being maintained, which has been fine. But I think to change this into a commercial location without a maintained road for access seems a little bit premature to do anything. I know, I think a lot of times staff feels like if, you know, you do this and they have to go for a conditional use permit, you can kind of stay on top of it. But a lot of times that just doesn't happen. I think it's really premature to be rezoning this. The landowner has a lot to improve before I think that should be done. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience care to address this item? Please state your name and address.
My name is Darrell Kurth, twenty-five one twenty-nine, four sixty-sixth Avenue, Colton. I live there, but I also have a property on Fifth Street in Lyons with a house. My wife and I are considering building a new house there to replace that one. I went to that school years ago, and to see that property in the condition it is, it's hard to swallow. You know, as a potential new homeowner coming to that town, we're having second thoughts if these kinds of things continue to happen and the properties get abused like this with nuisance items. He talked about money to get rid of the stuff. I know there's a lot of people that'll haul away scrap and probably pay us something for it. I don't go on the property, but I've driven by. There's waste oil barrels, there's forklifts, there's moors. It's just, it's not a safe property. Talks about the kids vandalizing the school and stuff. How safe is that school? Is it protected from kids going in there? What happens if somebody fell and got hurt, got locked in there? I strongly suggest that somebody goes out there and inspects the buildings to see what condition they are before anything moves forward with the rezoning. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience care to address this item? The petitioner, you want to come forward?
All we're asking you to do is match the zoning with the land use, building structures. We're aware of the issues. And by making a commercial, it makes it saleable. Right now, it's not saleable. Because one guy is not the next guy. Who the owner shouldn't have anything to do with whether or not it's commercial or not. The gymnasium's commercial, but the school's not. I guess, I understand where they're coming from, but they also don't understand that the purchaser is not the owner. So I guess they want it to stay the same, turn it down if they want it to get worse, go back to what it was, deny it. I think it'd be in the best interest for the county and town of Lyons to approve it. Purchasers aware they need a conditional use permit, and there's going to be work to do in order to get that done. So thank you.
Okay, anybody else before I close the floor? Commissioners?
Could I ask a question of staff?
Sure.
Madam Chair, if I could ask Kevin just his perspective on the property now. I mean, I'd say functionally, we're getting another nuisance complaint here tonight that they're not satisfied. The community is not satisfied with the existing state of the property, but I'm also hearing kind of a chicken and egg problem where maybe the only, there's no way around, we might have to go through to make any difference on the property. But how would you assess? Obviously, you were out there recently. If we'd gotten a nuisance complaint, what do we need to take action on this? Something needs to change. I guess I'm looking for what needs to break loose.
So, in somewhat of an anticipation, I guess maybe I'll do this, a question like this. I did go ahead and pull some photos from the two thousand and eighteen rezoning. There is some improvements. Like I said, there's clearly stuff there that's still a nuisance. But from two thousand eighteen, you can see this, there's a lot more cars there. A lot more stuff. And you can see that a lot of the cars here are, like they said, the same cars five, six years later. This stuff like this here is largely picked up. I'm not saying all of it. And I'm sure that the petitioner would also agree that it's not all of it. It is part of the reason why, I guess, I haven't brought it to the county commission to clean it up for a public nuisance. Although it's still junk there, the person who I've been working with, the son of the owner, has been making some progress, little here, a little there. It might not be enough, but there is some going on. And yes, it is hard. It is a hard line to walk.
And Madam Chair, if I can just clarify, just to restate some aspect of the staff report here, that the disposition of that last rezoning request was such that the rezoning request was denied after additional time was provided to remove the public nuisance items. My question would be, is that a possible action we could take? I think some of the feedback we got from members of the community was that maybe this was premature or that we needed some other signs of good faith by the current owner or future owner to show that this is going in the right direction. And so obviously, our predecessors took that action six years ago with some kind of deferment or delay to give time to show some action. So is that a, just asking if that's one possible course of action?
Yes, you could take some deferment to see if some of the items can be removed before approval.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anybody else have any questions for him? Yes, not. Do you want to comment? I'll give you a minute.
Those pictures are, it's a lot more cleaned up than that, Kevin. That entire thing was full of garbage. It still needs a lot of work, but things are in piles, ready to go, so. It's a matter of hauling trailers in and getting stuff out. There's there's three vehicles on the property plus that RV. So it's massively different than what it was. I just wanted to make sure you guys, there has been major changes done to this. It's not just called a car off and that was it. So just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. I've already, I'll give you one minute.
When we purchased the property, and it was, I didn't know what's what. We went up there and looked at it. And I I mentioned to many of the people from Lyons that I was concerned about the old bus barn and that catching fire and might damage my building. I didn't know at the time that most of those people in that meeting worked for Central State's fire apparatus. And one of them looked at me and said, "We don't worry about fire here."
Okay, I've closed the floor. Commissioners?
Madam Chair, I guess this is probably pretty close to me anyway. I'm up there quite a bit. I know, like Mr. Hampton said, yeah, he has cleaned some stuff up. Don't get me wrong, he has. Or there has been some stuff cleaned, but there still is stuff up there that probably should get out of there. I guess I'm kind of favoring what Mr. Kipley was proposing, maybe kick it down the road in maybe five, six months or something to see if we can get it all out of there. I'm not totally opposed of it, I guess. I'd like to see it cleaned up and ready to do something up there. I'd like to see the property in use, I guess, too. But yet I'd like to have it cleaned up. I'd like to have a good faith that it's going to get cleaned up and stay cleaned up, I guess, before I would agree to it. So.
Sir, you're out of order.
They asked me to clarify a question of staff. You know, tonight we're looking at the use of the property going commercial. We're not necessarily saying that he can operate his car lot on it, correct? So I guess where I'm going with that notion is, even if we do approve this night, we still have that club, so to speak, to enforce cleanup by denying any future car lot going up there. So I appreciate, you know, the community coming out and voicing a valid concern that, you know, unfortunately, this property has been in disarray for a long time. And yes, it has improved. Is it a hundred percent? No. But to the petitioner's point too, is where's the initiative? There's not something out there for me as well. So I feel like by, you know, rezoning this commercial, yes, it's an appropriate land use, but we still have that club, so to speak, to prevent any future operation occurring here by the future conditional use permit.
Okay, anybody else?
Madam Chair, I'm going to disagree with them maybe a little bit, but I think with the access to the road, I think some things need some clarification as far as how that's all going to look like before we would turn this commercial. And the fact that kicking the can down the road, getting it cleaned up, we deferred it once, and it's been five years since then, or four or five years since then, and we haven't, I mean, it's still not cleaned up. I don't think we're going to get cleaned up by deferring it five months, but that's, I would be not in favor of this tonight, I guess.
Anyone else? I will entertain some sort of a motion. You're out of order, actually, so. Go, do you have a comment?
Well, I guess my comment was just, I kind of echo the sentiment that you'd like to see something done here and something to propel us forward. Seems like we're just kind of in a situation of stasis where it's just kind of plugging along. I get that maybe a change in ownership might be what this needs. But I guess I'm just not ready to take that step here. So I guess I'm going to split the difference and maybe make a motion to defer this item for three months. Yeah, if that's, if you did my math for me, thank you.
Do I have a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion, second, to defer rezoning, twenty-four dash oh one. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. So that one will be deferred for three months. No old business? New business?
I just, we'll give you under old business, a quick update of last, I guess it's been two weeks ago, almost two weeks. We had our last, or we had our most recent subcommittee meeting of our comprehensive plan update, and Adam was there, Mike was there, Bonnie also was observing. We had some very good discussions on some possibilities. We have concluded, the meetings have concluded, so we will be bringing back some more hammered-out ideas for the planning commission to consider when we are ready to present the next update. We're looking basically maybe at proposing some small modifications to how we transfer building eligibility. That was one of the items. We looked at maybe setting up some criteria in the comprehensive plan that would allow for higher densities if you could meet some very specific criteria like being adjacent to a road, having forty acres, having a sanitary sewer district or some kind of a community sanitary sewer system. There's a number of criteria, road districts, but anyway, not in the floodplain and density. So we've made some good progress, and I guess I will also ask Mike and Adam to chime in if they want to share anything else, but we're making progress on our comprehensive plan, and we'll be bringing some more chapters here soon now that we have some concrete direction from our task force. Would you like to add anything, gentlemen?
No, I just think the staff hold the work they put into those meetings, so it's much appreciated.
Yeah, we had good turnout, we had good discussion, and I think we have addressed some needs and concerns that the community may have, and yet very cognizant about maintaining that ag, the agricultural activities, the necessity for agricultural activities. I think there was some, a lot of concern, a lot of weight given to how we are going to continue to promote and maintain our ag community and still maybe also offer some possibilities for some beneficial residential uses, so.
I'd just like to say thanks a lot. I think it was great, and all the guys they brought into are really good to bring their ideas, so.
I'd also like to thank the staff and Mike and Adam for sitting on that committee. I thought we had a good group of people, and there were some good comments. That's what that's supposed to be about. Okay, I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. We will move on.